The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ngracia.
Present.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Valmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Grass.
Present.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Collins Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Velcaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Collins Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by our very own Reverend John Watson, Jr. of Maple Temple. Reverend Watson?
God bless you all. We thank God for you all, and we are continuing to pray for each and every one of you. With that in mind, we'll quote from the Holy Scriptures. Unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be on his shoulders, and he will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, and Prince of Peace. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, in these days leading up to the Christmas season, help us as a community to focus on the good news that has caused great joy around the world and across the ages. We are in awe that the coming of the Lord Jesus has shaped the history of the world and has caused change to untold millions. We rejoice in the proclamation of Emmanuel God with us. As a wonderful counselor, we acknowledge that your wisdom have kept our decisions and discussion on the path of truth and justice. As a mighty God, your strength has been with us to give us courage to stand in the face of adversity. As an everlasting father, you have protected us and provided what we needed to flourish and grow. Now, as the Prince of Peace, we ask that you will look on our city officials and workers as they break for the holiday, allow their homes and their families to experience peace that surpassed understanding, and that you will invigorate them to continue to serve our great city. And to your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our community. Amen.
Amen. Let's give Reverend Watson a big round of applause. Thank you for good opening prayer today. Thank you. Thank you. That was perfect for us, setting us up for the holidays.
God bless you all. Have a safe-
Thank you, Reverend Watson. We would dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize.
As always, I'd like to welcome my good friend Greg Meyer, who's always with me or watching online.
Greg, welcome. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up. Alderman from the 10th.
National Noodle Ring Day today, which means nothing to me and nothing to anyone else, but on this day in 1860, the state of Indiana became a state in the United States where the Hoosiers is a completely different thing than we have a Hoosier here. So let's welcome the Hoosiers from 1816. Thank you.
All right, welcome to the Hoosiers from 1860. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, December 4th, 2020.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 4th, 2020.
Move by Alderman from 10th, second by Alderman from 9th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Central West End South Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Michael Mullen with a term ending December 31st, 2023. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Central West End South Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President, and I move to approve these appointments.
Move by Alderman from the 17th and entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the 10th, and another person I missed. Alderman from 10th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for the appointment to the Euclid South Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Stephen Ledbetter, whose term will expire January the 8th, 2022. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Euclid South Community Improvement District.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for approval of this appointment.
Move by Alderman from 17th, second by Alderman from 10th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the appointment to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission. The reappointment of Mr. Aldeed Ahmed, whose term will expire on November 21st, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Amina Tasek, whose term will expire November 21st, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. James Dearing, whose term will expire November 21st, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Nancy Williams, whose term will expire November 21st, 2022. The reappointment of Ms. Lisa Goode, whose term will expire November 21st, 2022. The reappointment of Ms. Carol Robinson, whose term will expire November 21st, 2022. The re- I'm sorry, the appointment of Mr. Kevin McKinney, whose term will expire November 21st, 2023. The reappointment of Mr. Charles Brown, Jr., whose term will expire November 21st, 2023. The reappointment of Mr. David Newburger, whose term will expire November 21st, 2023. The reappointment of Mr. Saladin Martinez, whose term will expire November 21st, 2023. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we approve this list of appointees forwarded by the mayor.
Second.
By Alderman from the 19th, second by Alderman from the 10th, Alderman from the 1st.
I'm going to ask for a roll call. I continue to oppose this late kind of appointment, so I'm going to be voting present. Not that I'm opposed to the people, I'm opposed to the mayor who is not running for office, not giving the new mayor a chance to appoint their own appointees.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th, second by Alderman from the 10th, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Tyus.
There you go.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ngracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. I'm sorry, Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Velcaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
For Alderwoman Middlebrook, thank you.
I'm sorry, was that a aye?
Thank you.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-one aye votes and one present.
My vote is staying the motion of Alderwoman from the 19th and adopted the mayor's appointments to the Civil Rights Enforcement Commission.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Senior Services Fund Board. The appointment of Ms. Julia Allen, whose term will expire April 17th, 2021. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderwoman from the 4th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Senior Services Fund Board. Alderwoman from the 4th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Senior Services Fund Board. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I miss-
You want to make the motion to adopt the mayor's appointment to the Senior Services Fund Board? You froze. Oh.
Yes.
There you go. You want to just do, you move to adopt the mayor's appointments?
Okay. I moved to adopt the mayor's appointment.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the 4th, entertain a second. Second by Alderman from the 13th. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask for a roll call, and I'm going to ask for previous roll.
Okay, all right, perfect. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? There's been a request for roll call, and there's been a request for a previous roll. There are no objections. Motion carries.
That is the extent of Office of the Mayor. Reporter city officials.
We would dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items seven. We'll dispense with line items eight, also eight through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 183, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment, authorized and directing the directive airports and the control of the City of St. Louis owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute on behalf of the City H, I'm sorry, OHM Concession Group LLC Concept Food and Beverage First Amended and Restated Concession Agreement AL 120 between the City and OHM Concession Group LLC containing severability clause and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 184, sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Dorothy Jackson Johnson Way on Alice Avenue between Carter Avenue and West Florissant. Board Bill 185, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment, authorized and directing the directive airports and the controller for the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the City of St. Louis Lambert International Airport First Amendment to its airport use and lease agreement when applicable, its airport use and lease agreement with cargo addendum containing severability clause and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 186, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December 2nd, 2020 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the C Multiple Family Dwelling District to G Local Commercial and Office District in City Block 2294, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block 2294 and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 187, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December 2nd, 2020 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K Unrestricted District to H Area Commercial District in City Block 9097, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block 9097 and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 188, sponsored by Alderman Orion, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December 2nd, 2020 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from A Single Family Dwelling District to C Multiple Family Dwelling District in City Block 4634.05, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block 4634.05 and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 189, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December 2nd, 2020 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K Unrestricted District to H Area Commercial District in City Block 391803, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block 3918.03 and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 190, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the controller of the City of St. Louis on behalf of the City to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control being offered pursuant to federal fiscal year 2020 Notice of Funding Availability for the Lead Hazardous Reduction Demonstration Grant Program and directing the controller to issue warrants thereon upon the City Treasury and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December 2nd, 2020 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from K Unrestricted District to H Area Commercial District in City Block 320, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block 320 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderman Calder, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December 15th, 2020 for the 300 through 338 North Fourth Street area. Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderman Calder, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December 15th, 2020 for the 1014 Spruce Street area. Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December 15th, 2020 for the 4100 through 4122 West Florissant and 4569 Alice Avenue area. Board Bill 195, sponsored by Alderman Todd, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated November 17th, 2020 for the 5025 Dalemore Boulevard area. Board Bill 196, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and United Fruit and Produce Company for certain land at or near 2226 North First Street in the City for a period of five years with four or five-year mutual options for the purpose of vehicle and trailer parking and storage and at an annual base rent of $1,000, $1,000 with a 2% annual escalator for the first five years and containing severability clause. Board Bill 197, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 59043, approved on February the 10th, 1984, which closed Swan, Norfolk and Vista Avenues at the east line of Taylor Avenue. The ordinance authorizes and directs the directive streets to reopen Norfolk and Vista Avenues, but to keep Swan Avenue closed and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 198, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard and Alderwoman Pamela Boyd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the director of the City of St. Louis Department of Health to accept a $200,000 grant from the National Foundation for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention with the project name of COVID-19 Care Kids for Faith-Based Communities and known as Project 1085 upon approval of the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for the grant purposes and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 199, sponsored by Alderman Calder, and ordinance authorizing the street name Cam Massey Way, which shall begin at the intersection of North Broadway and Convention Plaza and run south on North Broadway to the intersection of North Broadway and Lucas Avenue. Board Bill 200, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, and ordinance approving a contract between the City of St. Louis and Persistent Surveillance System Community Support Program and directing the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department and other city officials to enter into such contract and any related agreements and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 201, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Chief of Police on behalf of the Mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Safety, Office of Homeland Security to fund the 2020 Operation Legend Grant Program upon approval of the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Chief of Police on behalf of the Mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety Office of Homeland Security to fund the 2019 Project Safe Neighborhoods Program upon approval of the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts for otherwise or otherwise for grant purposes and containing emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bill.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 183 and 185. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 184, 197 and 199. To the HUD Committee, Board Bills 186, 187, 188, 189, 191, 192, 193, 194 and 195. To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 196. To the COVID-19 Specials Committee, Board Bill 198. To Public Safety, Board Bill 190, 200, 201 and 202. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported from the Public Safety Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 162, Committee Subsponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Ngracia, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Todd and Alderman Orion. An ordinance pertaining to the electric vehicle charging station amending ordinance 70794, which adopted the 2018 International Building Code as amended and codifying said changes in Chapter 25 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis and containing severability clause, savings clause and an effective date. Board Bill 163, Committee Subsponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Ngracia, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Todd and Alderman Orion. An ordinance pertaining to the electric vehicle charging station amending ordinance 70795, which adopted the 2018 International Residential Code as amended and codifying said changes in Chapter 25 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis and containing severability clause, savings clause and an effective date. Board Bill 181, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance pertaining to the electric vehicle charging station amending ordinance 70797, which adopted the 2018 International Existing Building Code as amended and codifying said changes in Chapter 25 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis and containing severability clause, savings clause and an effective date. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
We would dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 76, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for 273259 Street. Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Todd, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated May 26th, 2020 for the 528 North Newstead Avenue area. Board Bill 108, sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated August 25th, 2020 for the 5337 Von Poole Street area. Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated, I'm sorry, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for 5520 Daggett Avenue. Board Bill 110, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for the 5509 Magnolia Avenue. Board Bill 116, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer. An ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated April 21st, 2020 for the 3712, 3716 Nebraska and 3717, 3719, 3728, 3729 and 3730 Oregon Avenue. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September 22nd, 2020 for the 4914 Daggett Avenue area in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 128, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and ordinance approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for 5266 Maple Avenue Redevelopment Area. Board Bill 130, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated April, I'm sorry, September 22nd, 2020 for the 3620 Texas Avenue area. Board Bill 131, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September 22nd, 2020 for the 3170 through 3172 Oregon Avenue. Board Bill 137, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September 22nd, 2020 for the 4021 Iowa Avenue. Board Bill 142, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for 4320 through 4330, 4350 and 4350 rear South Kings Highway Boulevard Redevelopment Area. Board Bill 147, sponsored by Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Todd, and ordinance of authorizing and directing the directive streets to permanently close, barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Vernon Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the west curb line of North Kings Highway Boulevard. of North Kings Highway Boulevard at the intersection of Vernon Avenue and North Kings Highway Boulevard. Board bill one forty-nine sponsored by Alderman Orion and ordinance amending ordinance number seven one 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 one. Prohibiting such traffic along West Park Avenue from the eastern boundary of Hampton to the eastern boundary of Hughes Place to extend said prohibition to include commercial vehicle traffic along Hughes Place between the northern boundary of Dale Avenue and northern boundary of West Park Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board bill one fifty-six sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface right for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Louisa from Second as bounded by St. George, DeKalb, Louisa, and Second in the city of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter authority and conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could could we pull seventy-six, one oh nine, one-ten, and one-twenty-five off the consent calendar, please?
Hold a second. You said seventy-six.
One oh nine.
One oh nine.
One-ten.
One-ten.
And one-twenty-five.
And one-twenty-five. Please make note of that. Place the following board bills on the regular perfection calendar. Board bill seventy-six, board bill one oh nine, one-ten, and one-twenty-five. Please place those at on the at the end of the regular perfection calendar at the request of Alderman from twenty-four.
So noted.
All right. Any further, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar as revised.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar as revised.
Been moved by Alderman from the tenth, second about Alderwoman from the thirteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the tenth. I'm clerk.
That is extent of perfection consent calendar.
Board bills for perfection.
Board bill one sixty-six as amended sponsored by Alderman Boyd, President Reed, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Collins Mohammed, Alderman Vaquaro, and Alderwoman Boyd. An ordinance pertaining to the Excise laws of the city of St. Louis amended ordinance six eight five three six, section one four point zero six point one hundred, one four point zero six point two one zero, one four point zero six point two two zero, and one four point zero six point two four zero. Presently codified in chapter fourteen point zero six of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis having as their subject matter drink license, licensing, employee-related licensing requirements, and employee criminal background checks and contain the severability clause, emergency clause, and a penalty clause.
Alderwoman from nineteenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill one sixty-six as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adopt board bill one sixty-six as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth. Entertained a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just simply say that this is a much needed board bill amendment and it gives an opportunity for more residents of our community to be employed in jobs that are good jobs. Ignoring the fact that they have had some small run-in and or as we identified a felony, but they should have the right to have good employment. So I believe that this is something that will really help and that we do appreciate this opportunity to make this available to our community.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the nineteenth would yield, please.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth will yield to Alderwoman from the first.
Yes.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderwoman, I agree that much of we have archaic stuff about people who especially as we go into decriminalizing many drugs, it's very archaic to have these things that said people who've got these three strikes, you're out or whatever it is. Or these drug possessions and all of these kind of things that then we say they can never ever pay their debt to society and that can never become a full functioning citizen. I do have the one question and that's not to the thing about drugs. It's about the Excise Commissioner at his reasonable discretion require applicants to submit a fingerprint-based criminal background checks. So I'm always hesitant to give bureaucrats too much discretion because they don't use it fairly all the time. So I just seen it appeared to me when I read that we were leaving kind of a giant loophole depending on who the Excise Commissioner is to apply that unfairly. So when you all were making that decision, did we come up with any kind of standards that maybe we would look at to their reasonableness? Because otherwise, what I've found in my years in government is that that they're a lot stricter on some people and a lot more lenient to other people.
Well, that question was asked in the committee hearing and and the Excise Commissioner did explain to us that that is also a state requirement, well, not a requirement, but allowance. And he did explain to us that since he's been here as our commissioner, he's only used it twice. So with the many liquor licenses that have gone through our system, it gives me some comfort. But I also do know that the persons that brought this to us, some of our larger employers in the city who really need to hire people, they would fight it if it was unjust. So I feel comfortable with that.
But I did he give an example when he thought it was, and I wasn't there, so I'm just kind of picking your brain. When did he think that it was a reasonableness test that he said, oh, I need to take these fingerprints? Was it that somebody lied to him or he thought somebody wasn't being truthful? Or he needed to run a wider background check? And he thought fingerprints could give him a better idea of people? Is that the kind of thing that we're talking about?
He did not go to that extent in explanation in the committee, but we did just leave it at the fact that he'd only used it twice.
Okay, I'm going to call him because I still, you know, have some question about that reasonableness. In just in my other life, when I was a juvenile attorney, it used to always pain me that the black kids would be brought to juvenile and the white kids would be in taken home. And now people see that with stats, but those are the kind of things when you give people that ability to use their discretion, their discretion is not very good. In our own zoning right now, zoning tends to push certain things to north St. Louis and don't push them to central quarter downtown, you know, so bureaucratic discretion has not been a good thing for me. So I will have that conversation with him to see if he can give me some concrete things of why he would question one person versus another. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-third that we perfect board bill one sixty-six as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
Board bill seventy-six sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for twenty-seven thirty-two fifty-ninth street area.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on perfection of board bill seventy-six.
I move to perfect board bill seventy-six.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth, entertained a second on motion, seconded by Alderman from the sixteenth. Alderman from the tenth, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we perfect board bill seventy-six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Madam clerk.
I'm sorry. Board bill one zero nine sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for fifty-five twenty Daggett Avenue area.
All right. Hey, I wanted to tell the Alderman from the twenty-fourth, even though it was a voice vote, if you want to make, if you want to assure that your your no was clarified, make sure to give it to the clerk and he'll enter it into the journal for you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill one oh nine.
I move to perfect war bill one oh nine.
Moved by the Alderman from the tenth, entertained a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the sixteenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we perfect board bill one oh nine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
No.
Motion carries.
Board bill one-ten sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for the fifty-five zero nine Magnolia Avenue.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill one-ten.
I move we perfect board bill one-ten.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertained a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the sixteenth, and I think it was the Alderwoman from the twenty twenty-seven. Alderman from the tenth, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
No.
Motion carries.
Board bill one twenty-five sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty for the forty-nine fourteen Daggett Avenue area in the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill one twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect board bill one twenty-five.
Moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertained a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the sixteenth. Any discussion? Alderman from the tenth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect board bill one twenty-five. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board bill one forty-eight as amended and board bill one fifty-two as amended.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent counter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertained a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? Madam clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Rhodey is aye. Rhodey is aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-four aye votes.
Your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board bill one forty-eight as amended and board bill one fifty-two as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderwoman from the first, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to suspend the rule so we may introduce resolutions eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five. Do you want them done separately or as a group?
We'll do them as a group. We can suspend and move them all. And eighty-three and eighty-four, you want those going to the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar?
Yes, please. Yes, and eighty-five I would like on the normal resolution calendar, first reading.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the first. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? It's been moved by Alderwoman from the first, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third that we spend the rules for the purposes of introducing the following resolutions. Resolutions eighty-three to go to Courtesy Resolutions Calendar, eighty-four Courtesy Resolutions, and eighty-five to the regular Resolutions Calendar. Madam clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Volmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Grass.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cole. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-three aye votes.
By a vote staying the motion, Alderman from the first and introduce the aforementioned resolutions. Madam Clerk, please place resolutions eighty-three and eighty-four at the end of our courtesy resolutions calendar and resolution eighty-five at the end of our regular resolutions calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the twenty-seventh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, I'd like my name added to I'd like my name added to all of the courtesy resolutions, please, especially the Isley Brothers and the Alderwoman, the, the resolution for Alderwoman Shamie Hubbard, Clark Hubbard, but I want them on all of them.
Okay, excellent. So Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman to the first, all of the resolutions on courtesy resolutions calendar. It just get, Ald, Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize, I'd like to have the resolution number eighty-three read, please, I'd like to actually give a small intro, we have some folks here that are paying attention and watching us today and in honor of one of our great city employees.
Okay.
So if you don't
Which, which resolution? What was the resolution number? It was one of the, the eighty, was it eighty-three?
That's right, Mr. President, miss, uh, res- resolution number eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
We have some members of the Comptroller's Office, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I'll speak for a minute when, when appropriate.
No, go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, resolution number eighty-three is a resolution honoring Dr. Ishmael Ipiauma, uh, who has been an extraordinary, uh, employee of the city of St. Louis. Uh, and this resolution is recognizing the work he has done for our city as one of our city's most dedicated employees. Dr. Ishmael Ipiauma has been an exemplary employee of, um, the Comptroller's Office for over thirty years and has not only served our city in that time, but had, as an immigrant to the United States, has also worked over his many years here in St. Louis to welcome and integrate new residents here. Efforts that are so important, especially as we look at, uh, soberly at our dwindling population, recognizing that immigrants play an incredibly important role in helping to grow our city's population. Uh, and with that, I'd like to ask, uh, I'd like to recognize that, uh, Dr. Ipiauma is here today as are many members of the Comptroller's Office, and I'd like to ask the clerk to please read resolution eighty-three.
Do you have resolution eighty-three, Alderman from the twentieth?
I do, Mr. President, it is in, uh, the Google Drive and it was distributed, I believe, by Mr. Clerk last night.
Okay, I, the reason I ask is because for courtesy resolutions, um, uh, for our rules, you can read them, we've, we've allowed the, the clerk to read, uh, some, uh, in the past, but if you have it, that may be quicker, I don't know if the clerk.
Either way, Mr. President, I talked to the
You already told, okay, Madam Clerk, do you have the resolution ready?
I'd be happy to read it, Mr. President, if it's easier.
No, let, let me, let me see if she has it ready.
Yeah, I can.
Courtesy resolutions aren't read by the clerk, but, uh, unless we tell her earlier, then she can have it ready for.
Yes, I can pull it out the drive, give me just a second.
All right, but if you have it, Alderman from the twentieth, uh, you can begin reading it now.
Sure, Mr. President, I'd be happy to, in fact, I'd be greatly honored to do so. Resolution number eighty-three honoring, uh, Dr. Ishmael Ipiauma, uh, whereas the Honorable Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis has become aware of the many accomplishments, contributions, and the impending retirement of Dr. Ishmael Ipiauma from the St., from St. Louis Comptroller's Office, whereas Dr. Ipiauma earned a PhD in finance from Clayton University in Ventura, California, and served as a teacher at the Teacher Training College in Nigeria for fifteen years. He then immigrated to the United States permanently and arrived here in St. Louis in nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas he has served the city of St. Louis for more than thirty years in the Comptroller's Office, beginning as an auditor one in nineteen eighty-nine and working up to audit supervisor in nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas Dr. Ipiauma's many accomplishments and contributions made through dedicated service to the citizens of St. Louis have helped shape the internal audit section of the Comptroller's Office, and he has received commendations, including from the Director of Personnel in two thousand seventeen for outstanding service and dedication. And whereas he has trained, mentored, and managed countless colleagues over the years resulting in improvements to assessing risk, fraud examinations, practical auditing, and process improvement, and whereas Dr. Ipiauma continues to help those in need, including family and friends here as well as those who remain in Nigeria. Additionally, he freely gives his time to help other immigrants to the St. Louis area integrate and transition to becoming United States citizens, including helping many enroll in university, and whereas he is deeply involved with his church's congregation, the St. Louis Central Church, and its various community outreach programs, including its program Christians for New Americans. This has been important, an important program for Dr. Ipiauma and his wife Grace, as they have dedicated much of their lives to giving back to those in need. And whereas the most important role in Dr. Ipiauma's life has been as a devout husband to his wife Grace and father to their five children, I would butcher their names if I tried, I, I must apologize in advance for that. But, uh, now I would like to recognize that here at the Board of Aldermen, this and Dr., and, and Mr. President, if you'd like, I know you like to say a few words about just how important these resolutions are, I would defer to you in that matter. I just want to say what a great honor it is to play a very small role in recognizing the long dedicated service of one of our, uh, truly exemplary employees. It's an honor to serve as your Alderman in the twentieth ward, Dr. Ipiauma, and I'm so grateful you could join us here today as you celebrate your coming retirement.
Right, uh, is the comptroller, has the comptroller joined us?
The comptroller, uh, I know members of the Comptroller's Office are here watching, um, I can see Tyson Pruitt here. And, uh, in, in, in the, um, in the attendees list, I'm not sure if Comptroller Green is here with us.
All right, is Dr. Ishmael, uh, set up to, uh, say a couple of words? Did you plan on Dr. Ishmael saying a couple of words?
Uh, Mr. President, we, we hadn't planned on that, um, I, I know we have a celebration in the Comptroller's Office next week, uh, where that would happen, um, and I, and I welcome the members of the board, if anybody would like to join in that in person, please let me or the Comptroller's Office know that there would be an opportunity to hear Dr. Ipiauma talk about, uh, his service at that time.
Dr. Ishmael, congratulations on behalf of members of the board and people across the city and the community and the region who aren't able to congratulate you personally on a job well done, to, to put in as many years as you put in and to grow through the ranks is just admirable. You know, and I appreciate it as, not just as the president and Board of Aldermen, but as a father of four who has raised his kids, uh, in the city of St. Louis. I, I appreciate your hard work, um, and, you know, what I'd like to tell the city employees is that, you know, oftentimes you're the first and a lot of times the only contact the, the public has with the city. So your works go a long way in, in terms of helping people build confidence and, uh, connecting to our city. So I thank you for all of that, and I thank you for all of your works outside of city government, working to help connect people and help families, uh, grow and, uh, helping people integrate within our community. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or, or individual. So what we're doing today is we're writing your story into the permanent records of the city. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when they come back and research the records of the city of St. Louis, they will be able to read about your many contributions and your work history here. Congratulations on a job well done.
Mr. President.
Let's give him a big round of applause.
Yay.
Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, Comptroller Green indicated she is on, she is watching. She, uh, would like me to offer her congratulations to Dr. Ipiauma on her behalf as she, uh, watches along, uh, with us.
All right, and, uh, congratulations also, uh, and thank you, Madam Comptroller, for, um, keeping and, and growing such a great employee for the city of St. Louis. Any further discussion on resolution eighty-three? I have some names, some hands were up, but it may be for other things. Alderman from the nineteenth, is your hand up for other things or for this resolution?
Uh, my hand is up for this resolution.
Okay.
Uh, over the years and for various reasons, whether I was on a committee, uh, way before I even became an Alderperson. Uh, I do know of his work, I appreciate the fact that, uh, he stayed with us because we can't pay our city employees what they're really worth. But to give that sacrifice and to stay, uh, with the city and at, at such a high level of expertise, we do appreciate you and we thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right, thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth, where your, is your hand up for something else or for Dr. Ishmael? You're almost there. Nope, not yet. Oh, you still muted. Okay, all right, Alderman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I'd like to request that we put this resolution in bank so that all members of the board could join me in honoring Dr. Ipiauma.
Been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second about Alderman from the nineteenth and the thirteenth, that we make resolution eighty-three, uh, in bank, any objection? Uh, it's, uh, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Congratulations again, Doctor. Alderman from the eighteenth.
I would like to be added to resolutions number seventy-four and number seventy-seven, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the eighteenth to resolution seventy, seventy-four, and what was the second one?
Seventy, uh, seven.
Seventy-four and seventy-seven. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, could you please add my name to, uh, seventy-seven, eighty, and eighty-one?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the twenty-fourth to seventy-seven. Did you say eighty-eight? Eighty. Eighty and eighty-one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. For some reason, I wanted to say seventy-seven, eighty-eight, and eighty-one, I said, wait. There is no, so, Madam, Alderman from third, from the thirteenth.
Yes, please add my name to, uh, resolution seventy-seven also, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note, add Alderman from thirteenth to seventy-seven. Alderman from the twenty-third.
You can just add my name to all of the, on the informal calendar.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from twenty-third to all of the resolutions on the courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the ninth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I was also gonna ask to, uh, add my name to seventy-seven and eighty. And didn't know if anyone was gonna ask to put those in bank.
You can if you would like.
Uh, well, I would like to ask that we put, uh, resolution seventy-seven and resolution eighty in bank.
Madam Clerk, excuse, it's been moved by Alderman from the ninth, second about Alderman from the nineteenth to do resolution seventy-seven and eighty in bank. Any objection? Any objection? See a lot of hands up, but, uh, and I'll go through them real quick just to make sure there's no objection. Alderman from, from the fourth, any objection?
No, no objections.
Okay, twenty-eighth, any objection? Uh, and Alderman from the nineteenth, any objection?
No, I'm, I'm
Okay, all right.
I can come down now.
All right, got, yeah, it's been moved and seconded that we make resolution seventy-seven and eighty, uh, in bank, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, Clerk, please make note of that, add all Alderman's names to resolutions seventy-seven and eighty. Uh, Alderman from the fourth.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to, uh, add my name to, uh, number forty, number seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
Resolution seventy-four.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the fourth, name to resolution seventy-four.
Oh, man, come on.
All right, any further, any further, anything for, righty. So it's been moved by the Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the nineteenth and seconded by, uh, the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. First reading resolutions.
Resolution seventy-six sponsored by Alderman Calder, Larson Capital Management LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on first reading of resolution seventy-six.
Sorry about that, Mr. President, uh, I move to, uh, send the resolution to the HUDs Committee.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign resolution seventy-six to HUDs.
Oh, noted. Resolution seventy-eight sponsored by Alderman Vaquaro, amending rules of the city of St. Louis, Board of Aldermen to remove party-specific language.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on the first reading of resolution seventy-eight.
So, uh, seventy-eight just corrects from proposition D, uh, and it takes out the, uh, basically the party-specific, which is Democrat, which means, uh, no matter how you run, you will be part of the overall caucus. Uh, we ran into that with, with Fred Hyder, who never moved up in, in, in seniority and was never invited to the caucus. So it's a simple thing, just takes out the party-specific out of our rules, and I would just ask for unanimous consent.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-third is requesting unanimous consent, any
Objection.
Objection. It's been an objection to unanimous consent, Alderwoman, um, so what you'll have to do is move to suspend the rules. Uh, you can do that now or you can do it in a minute.
I would move to suspend the rules to, that we would vote to, um, you know, to, to
To adopt resolution seventy-eight. Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we suspend the rules, second about Alder, Alderwoman from the nineteenth, that we suspend the rules for the adoption of resolution seventy-eight, Alderman from first.
Not to get in, in between the rules or anything, but you need twenty votes to amend the rules of the Board of Aldermen. I would ask that the Alderman would send this to the Rules Committee so we can have a discussion about what he's trying to do.
So
Alderman from the, oh, I have to recognize first, Alderman from the twenty-third.
Oh. Getting muted here. So my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, but isn't it just two-thirds of the people in the, in the meeting can amend? At least that was my understanding of the rules.
It's aft- after the first, after we adopt the first, uh, rules after the first day of session, it's a two-thirds vote to be able to, to change them. So, um, uh, you know, you could, uh, if you have that many votes today, uh, we could move forward with it. Uh, or, or you can send it to the Rules Committee and, uh, bring it out.
If they're I believe I have the votes, we'll see, but I believe in talking to people, we have the votes. It just, all it does is fix what the voters had said they went on. So if you agree with the vote for the non-partis- So, if you agree with the vote for the nonpartisan, then that language should be taken out of our rules. And that's simply amending our rules to reflect the vote of the people. And so, I would, I would ask that we vote on this.
Alright, uh, Alderman from the 6th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo, uh, my colleague from the 1st. I think it would, um, be, because this is a confusing situation, um, I think it would be best so for Alderman to be able to hear about the process and what needs to happen moving forward before we just unilaterally, uh, pass this today. I think it would also be good, um, as a tool to educate the general public on, um, what is changing at the Board, how we're moving forward post Prop D. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Alderman from the 7th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Uh, I rise, I guess I'm, I'm not actually risen, I'm still sitting in my office, but, uh, in, in favor of this, uh, of this amendment to our rules, um, you know, I think this is yet again one of the unintended consequences of Prop D. Um, while I favor, you know, having runoff elections, uh, I think, and actually frankly, nonpartisan primaries, I, you know, I don't think the intent of this, and if it was, it certainly wasn't communicated to voters at the time, was to overhaul aldermanic seniority. I think this is a simple and straightforward change to our rules to keep basically seniority as it is, um, and, and I'll certainly support it, but, you know, my frustration with this Prop D and how it's being implemented is, this is another example. I mean, first, we had the signature requirement, which I don't oppose that, but that certainly was not something that the proponents of this ever mentioned in the numerous conversations I had or with them or their, uh, their public, uh, campaign, you know, failed to mention that. And then, the fact that we've, we've created a system where, you know, you're not, you're having a, a runoff election where people could potentially get, you know, the second person could get 20% and still be eligible to run in the second election, I, it, it just doesn't make sense. And I do hope, uh, this Board in, in a future session after years past, doesn't gut this thing completely but amends it so it is, makes more practical sense, you know, you should have, if you're gonna have approval choice voting or whatever it's called, I mean, there should be a mechanism where if somebody gets, you know, a, a vast majority of the votes in the first round, that that's it. Um, and, and I, I just, I, I think this thing's got all sorts of problems that need to be corrected in future sessions, uh, and one of its, its problems is that it's messed with our seniority, and I think we should, uh, we should take this simple change and fix our rules in advance of going down, um, for our recess for elections, and I will support the Alderman from the 23rd's, uh, resolution.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the 18th?
I think that I, this, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think this, uh, resolution should go to the Rules Committee so that we can discuss it and get clarity on it.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alderman from the 5th?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I too am in support of us moving forward with this, uh, resolution. I guess it kind of shocks me how, um, people wanna have so much conversation and really get in, in depth of what, what we should be doing now when, you know, Prop D just bombarded everybody and, and no one knew what was going on with it, and I echo a lot of the exact same, uh, sentiments of my colleague from the 7th. Uh, you know, if it's a notion that people think you, that you, you gonna lose your seniority for our rules, then we, we need to make a change regarding it, and, and if there's a hidden agenda somewhere where people with, where this was their end game so that we wouldn't have seniority, then I, I, I definitely have a problem with this. So, I am in support of this. I, um, would encourage everybody else to support it so we can move forward. I mean, there's a lot going on, meetings are long, no one needs this tied up for weeks or months or however long in any committee, and I, I think that, you know, uh, we are all figuring it out as we go, so I think that we definitely need to make a decision today, and I am definitely, uh, in support of it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Alderman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I agree with my colleagues who are looking to have this sent to a, a committee. Um, I agree that, you know, Prop D has triggered some, some necessary changes, um, and that we need to think about, and the rules are 82 pages long, so I'm scrolling through this PDF right now, and I don't know why we, I mean, I, I think it's important for us to have a conversation and, and think about what the implications of this are, maybe, you know, maybe the, the Alderman, um, knows that he's got the votes for this, but I know that I haven't been invited to any conversations about what the implications of these changes are. I may very well be in support of what these changes are because I agree, we need to look at the rules and we need to get things up to date in light of the passage of Prop D. Um, but I very much think, just like any other substantive change that we make at this Board, it should really go to a, to a committee to have that discussion. Thank you.
Right, uh, Alderman from the 1st? Alderman from the 1st?
Some?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. President, having a little problems here. Um, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Um, as the Chair of the Rules, a rule like this, I knew that that was going to be a problem when I opposed Proposition B. I thought that it was ridiculous, I was not for it, I spoke out against it, we put our ballot against it. I don't think that there was a conversation at all, but I called for one. By the same token, I called for a conversation. Now, that's what we have a Rules Committee for. You're talking about just straight out taking partisan away from it, when in fact, next year, we may change the entire, you have to wait one year and then you can change our ordinance, just like you can change any other ordinance that the Board of Aldermen, uh, does, but we just have to wait a year. I, um, of all people, if we're gonna talk about seniority, nobody has been affected by a, uh, a slick behind-the-scenes, uh, uh, maneuver than I have, because I should be number two in seniority. But I still think that we should take this to the Rules Committee, have a discussion, um, say what we're trying to do. There's no secret for me, I'll have, we're having a meeting Wednesday, so we can have it in the Rules Committee Wednesday, but I think it should be in the Rules Committee to have a full discussion so that people can hear all sides of it. I did that with Proposition D, which I was opposed to. I still had a hearing, it was open to everybody and fair. I will have a fair hearing, I do not think it's a good, uh, idea to pass this on the floor, and then there's another unintended consequence. So, I think it needs to be vetted and looked at, and so I would request that it be sent to the Rules Committee as the Chair and as one of the senior members here to look at this. And most certainly, I heard the Alderman from the 23rd talking about it, but did not even give me the courtesy of discussing it with me. Um, I don't think he would like that very much as the Public Safety Chair, but gives no courtesy to the members, uh, of the Rule Committee, of which he is a member. So, I would again be opposed to this and will be a vote, uh, voting against suspending the rules and doing it on the, on the floor, and I would ask that it be sent to the Rules Committee.
Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I agree with, uh, my, my colleague, uh, from the, the 1st and from the 28th. Uh, I, I don't think that I disagree with the, the, the substance of this overall, but I know, um, from, from personal experience, when you, when you go inside, uh, an 80-something page document and you start tinkering with it, that there can be some, some serious, uh, downstream unintended consequences. Uh, just as, uh, uh, my colleague from the 5th pointed out, uh, regarding Proposition D, when you, when you rush things through, you can, uh, create kind of a can of worms, uh, and it can be a mess to untangle, uh, uh, the web that you create there with those unintended consequences. Uh, given the fact that, um, the Alderwoman from the 1st is willing to have a, uh, a, a committee hearing on this on Wednesday, um, I don't believe that we need to, to push this through before we have a real conversation on it and understand all the moving parts and make sure that we're not, uh, uh, stepping on our own feet here and making a bigger mess that we're gonna have to clean up. Uh, so, uh, I, I would ask that this go to, uh, go to the Rules Committee, and, uh, I will be, uh, voting as such. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I believe that I'll be supporting this. Um, I think that, uh, this is, um, probably necessary. I also think that, um, this is very similar to term limits where you, there's a real possibility of people just catching their footing and, um, learning the city and, um, the rules and everything else that goes along with being an Alderman, and I think that's important. Um, I don't think people should just be thrown in cold to chair committees and whatnot. Um, but I do think this, uh, while I do believe I will be supporting this, I do think this does, um, deserve a committee hearing and discussion. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the 8th?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanna, um, thank the Alderman from the 23rd for bringing this forward. We, um, as Proposition D passed, I think we all realized that there were some changes that were going to need to be made. Um, I was attempting to use, uh, use the website version of the bill or of the resolution last night, um, to kind of dig through, but the, the copy that's in our drive is very helpfully, um, marked with, uh, line item changes, and so you can actually, you can see where the changes are coming in, and I didn't realize that until this morning that it's a different version online, I think understandably, because we, we need to see those changes as they come through. So, um, just, I, I would just wanna echo my, my colleagues that there are, you know, a lot of pages here, there's a lot to look through, um, and I, I do want to give this a thorough look. So, um, I would support sending this to the Rules Committee so that we can, um, have a hearing on it, especially if we're able to have a hearing this week. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman, Alderman from the 18th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my, uh, I had technical difficulty for a minute, but, uh, I would like to reiterate, uh, that I would like for this to, I'm on the Rules Committee, and I would like for this, uh, to go to the Rules Committee so we can get us, have a thorough discussion. We've just said that, uh, this was rushed through. Well, right now, we are rushing something through, uh, because we don't have time to discuss it, we haven't digest it, it was just forced it up on us, so, uh, I'm encouraging us to just take our time, look at it and, uh, see, um, uh, what, uh, and discuss it, and, uh, and this will give the public an opportunity to, uh, have some input, and it would give all of us, of us an opportunity to read it, to think about it. So, I, I think it should go to the committee and, uh, and thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Um, Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize to close on, on the assistance of the rules.
I would hope that everybody understands that there, right now, what will happen is, if we don't change our rules, the Democrats that are left are a party, independents are not a party. So, what will happen is, 16 of us will draw cards for the, what I guess would be the, uh, 11th or 12th or 13th spot in seniority. This, this is simply fixing what is going to become a problem, keeping in mind that independents are not a party. I know the Alderman's shaking her head no. I, you know, this is, this is a problem that I see, I don't care if I lose seniority, doesn't matter to me. Put me at the bottom of the list, but I can tell you, this will be more of an argument than it needs to be. I think that by including everyone in the, in the rules, in, in my, my thing, uh, if this goes to the committee, the argument's gonna be then, uh, is it gonna be the numbers of years served, which, uh, you know, would change the seniority, or whether it's contiguous, not contiguous, not continuous, whether it's broke up, not broke up. Um, you know, I, I think it's, it's a simple rules change. I think that when we do these, we do them in the caucus, you know? I'm not happy with not being able to say I'm a Democrat and be part of whatever. Um, you know, I, I, you know, I, I really don't think that, that, uh, this should be delayed. I, I think it's a simple change that we, we make, we never have it go to a committee before, we do this in caucus. I think, I think, you know, I don't know, I wish, I wish we were in session together where you could actually count your votes. I believe I have the votes to pass this right now. I think what I, I, I would like to do, and I hate to put this on him, but I think I'll defer to the President for his, uh, input on this.
I, I can't engage in the debate or discussion, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, you could move to suspend the rules, um, if, if that fails, then it automatically will go to rules and engrossments, right? Um, so, um, right now, there's a motion to suspend, um, so if you take the vote and it doesn't go through, it will automatically go to rules and engrossments anyway.
Let's do that, and I would move that we?
Alright, it's been moved by Alderman from 23rd, seconded by the?
Point of order.
Uh, Alderman, please state your point of order.
I had made a motion to suspend, uh, the, um, resolution to committee, I believe.
No, there was never a motion and a second, um, uh?
Okay, there was not a second, but I did move, but okay, if you say there was no second, but I did move.
Second.
Okay.
No, that?
All seconded.
No, that's outrageous. It's been moved by Ald, and I've already recognized Alderman from the 23rd to close, so it's been moved by Alderman from 23rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 19th that we spend our rules for the purposes of taking up Resolution Number 78. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia? Alderman Calder? Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Varmer?
Aye.
Alderman Grass? Alderman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderman Howard? Alderman Green? Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion? Alderman Clark Hubbard? Alderman Boyd? Alderman DeWaro?
No.
President Reed?
I'd like to change my vote.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Howard? Alderman Green? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Cole? Alderman Clark Hubbard? Alderman Boyd?
No.
No.
11 aye votes. 11, I'm sorry, 12 no votes and one present.
All right, by your vote, you fail to stand the motion, Alderman from the 23rd. Alderman from the 23rd, so you can choose to make an actual motion to send it to committee, to a committee, or, uh, we can just, uh, at this point, it would automat, whether, if we don't do anything on the first day of a resolution, uh, it would go to rules and engrossment. So you can.
No, if I don't make a motion, it goes to rules.
Yeah, okay, it's been moved by Alderman from 23rd, entertain a second on this motion.
Again.
Second about Alderman from 9th, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Rules, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 78 to rules and engrossment.
So noted. Resolution 79 sponsored by Alderman Howard and Alderman Murphy. Bevo Community Improvement District Director Appointments.
Alderman from 13th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 79.
President, members of the board, um, I move, uh, that we pass Resolution 79 with unanimous consent. It is a, um, renewal of, uh, the board members for the Bevo Sid, which resides in the 13th and 14th ward.
Uh, it's been requested, unanimous consent for Resolution 79 has been requested. Any objections? Hearing none, Alderman from the 13th, please proceed. Would you like to make a motion now to adopt Resolution 79?
I move that we, President, I'm sorry, members of the board, I move that we adopt Resolution 79.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from 27th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 82 sponsored by Alderman Calder and President Reed. Globe Building Company in the city of St. Louis, Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on first reading of Resolution 82.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to refer Resolution 82 to the HUDs Committee.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 82 to HUDs.
So noted. Resolution 85 sponsored by Alderman.
Tyus.
Tyus. Alderman Evans, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderman Grass, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Davis and Alderman Narayan. Opposing proposed school closings by the St. Louis Public Schools.
All right, um, Alderman from the first, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 85.
Mr., uh, President, members of the board, I request that the resolution, which is very important to all of us, but especially to the fourth ward be read.
All right, uh, and that's proper and in order. So, Madam Clerk, please read Resolution 85.
Resolution 85. Opposing proposed school closings by the St. Louis Public Schools. Whereas on December 1st, 2020, the superintendent for the St. Louis Public Schools submitted to the elective board of elections his recommendation for consolidation and. Plan to be retroactively effective for 2020, 2021 school session, which included four high schools and one middle school and six elementary schools. Whereas the St. Louis Board of Education set a very short timeline of seven days from December 1st, 2020, until December 7th, 2020 for community and staff feedback on the plan for school consolidation and closures. And whereas the primary sponsor of this resolution is unsure how the community was notified by St. Louis Board of Elections, I'm sorry, Board of Education, as to ways they could provide community input regarding the closure and consolidation plan of 11 schools. And whereas on December 8th, the St. Louis Board of Education scheduled a single two and a half hour virtual town, town hall meeting for the entire city of St. Louis on the recommended plan for the, to consolidate or close 11 St. Louis Public Schools. And whereas the St. Louis Board of Education has scheduled a meeting to vote on school consolidation and closures plan for December 15th, 2020, from 6:30 PM until 8:00 PM. And whereas of the 10 schools submitted for closure, seven schools are located in North St. Louis. Three schools are located in the fourth ward of the city, which encompasses the historic Ville and Greater Ville neighborhoods. The three schools are Farragut and Hickey Grade School and the Historic Summoner High School, and four more schools located in other parts of North St. Louis, duh, North St., North St. Louis, Clay, Dumbore, Ford Grade Schools and Northwest Lost High School. And whereas, North St. Louis neighborhoods whose boundaries go as far as northwest, go just west of Coal Bank Road and Riverview Drive, has been disseminated in, uh, in the last 20 years by school closing in the 1900s and early 2000s. During this time, North St. Louis neighborhood has six schools located in various North St. Louis neighborhoods, namely Beaumont, Central, Northwest, Summoner, Veshaun and Sodan High Schools. Five have been closed or consolidated, leaving Veshaun and Sumner as the only high school in North St. Louis neighborhood. If Sumner's school is closed, the most North St. Louis students will ha, will not have access to a high school anywhere in or near their community. And additionally, if Farragut and Hickey grade schools are closed, the fourth ward will be left without a grade school. And whereas, most alarming to the sponsors are the number of grade schools and middle schools that have been closed in the neighborhoods throughout North St. Louis, including seven schools in the fourth ward, Cobrillant, Marshall, Marshall Branch, Turner and Turner Branch, Simmons Grade School, Williams Middle School and other schools located in North St. Louis neighborhoods, including but are not limited to Mark Twain, Scullin, Couples, Kings Tri-A, Walnor Park, Walbridge, Baden, Cook, Hemp Hill, Mitchell, Emerson, LaCle, Langston, Gunlatch, Lowell, Euclid Ranch and Stowe Middle. And whereas, the closing of public schools not only disrupt and often has a negative impact upon the education of students attending those schools that are closed, but also, but often devastates the surrounding, surrounding community, making it impossible to attract proper development or carry out current development plans and leaving big empty properties that become a haven for criminal and nuisance behavior and buildings that are not properly maintained by the school board. And whereas currently there are 16 charter schools and 34 buildings in the city of St. Louis. And to add insult to injury, for years, St. Louis Charter Schools, which are public schools that are now required to follow some rules and regulations that apply to traditional public school districts, where they pay far from funds that would give the St. Louis City Schools were forbidden from locating in close St. Louis Public Schools, leaving the charter schools to pour funds into other buildings while empty closed St. Louis Public Schools and crumble and devastate communities. Said charter schools are still, as of the date of this resolution, not mandated, but should be mandated to open any new charter schools and empty closed St. Louis City Public School buildings, so that at least when they close in a few years, which many of them have done, they would help maintain the vacant empty buildings owned by St. Louis Public Schools. Whereas the Board of Education has published the consolidation criteria scoring matrix they maintain was used to make decisions about which, which schools to close or consolidate. And some have asserted that they were mistakes in the criteria and scoring, including the years some schools were built and the impact on neighborhoods. These people assert that same mistakes negatively affected the closing and consolidation recommendation. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the sponsor of this resolution are opposed to the proposed plan in its present form and request that the members of the St. Louis Public School change the timeline for taking the vote on, on the superintendent's recommendation to allow for additional substant, substantive review of the plan, a longer commentary time for public regarding the current proposed plan, a time for the board members and the superintendent of schools to meet with local, state and elected officials to answer questions and listen to suggestions regarding the proposed plan, a time to incorporate community and political recommendation and input in such plan. Be therefore resolved that the clerk of this Honorable Board of Aldermen be instructed to prepare and properly inscribed copy of this resolution to be immediately sent to the members of the St. Louis Board of Education and the superintendent. Introduced on this 11 day of December by Honorable Sharon Tyus, Honorable Dwendeland Evans, Honorable Joseph Vaquaro, Honorable Vicki Grass, Honorable Brandon Bosley, Honorable Marlene Davis and Honorable Brett Narayan.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Mr. President and members of the board, I also have, uh, Alderman Middlebrook had asked to be included, um, on this resolution. And I thought Alderman Todd also. Okay, um, and there was somebody I missed.
Uh, me.
Mr. President also wants to be included.
Yeah.
Ald, Alderman Murphy had asked to be included, thank you. There, thank you very much.
Yeah, you have to be a good teacher.
Okay, um, and so I would, uh, move to suspend the rules, um, uh, to pass this, uh, resolution. I do want to have a conversation on it.
You can just, uh, request unanimous consent and if nobody objects.
Oh, that's what I really meant to say anyway. I request unanimous consent to, uh, pass this most important resolution. And I'd ask anybody else that's concerned about schools, whether it's, uh, one closing in your community or not, to look at the seven day notice that they're giving us. And just on that alone, please join us in asking them to give more time, because, uh, not having a school in your neighborhood is the most important thing. Um, I have five, so I wish I could give one to the Alderman. I think that it's just ridiculous to have closed up every last one of her schools. Um, so, um, if I could get some more sponsors, I would like it. But if not, then I would, uh, seek unanimous consent.
Okay, okay. Uh, there, it's been requested unanimous consent to be able to pass Resolution 85 out today. Are there any objections, any objections to unanimous consent?
No.
Uh, Alderman from 11. Alderman from 11th objected to unanimous consent. So Alderman from the first, you can choose to suspend the rules to still move this out today or send it to committee.
Um, since we are talking about December the 15th, I'm going to move to suspend the rules to send this out today. Um, and it just really asks for more time for community input. Um, I would also let you know that I, um, I have asked, and the Legislative Caucus is also going to be weighing in on this. A seven day window.
Hold on, let me get this second. It's been moved by Alderman from the first.
Second.
Second about Alderman from 19th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of adopting Resolution 85 today. Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Um, um, the Legislative Caucus is also going to be weighing in on this. It is not an attack on anyone. It is just a seven days to close 11 schools. The superintendent made the recommendation on the first and then said that the community had to have input by the seventh. There is no way that the community even knew about much of this until the last few days. And the Sumner High School is such an important part of St. Louis history. I didn't get to go to Sumner High School, but ever since I've known my husband, whose father was the principal of Sumner, all I've ever heard from when I was in college was a Sumner High School, the importance of it, before black people could go, uh, to other schools. This was a school that was educating people, that have put out so many important people, that we're just asking the school board not to make this decision, um, hastily. Seven days is not fair to, uh, assess, uh, entire community and the things that would happen to it if you go ahead and pass this out. And so, um, I would seek unanimous consent. And, um, I don't know if I can do this, uh, Mr. President, but the fourth ward, uh, Alderman lives in the fourth ward, this is affecting her. I would ask if, and if it may not be possible, if she could also speak to why unanimous consent is so important to her community. Because when you're facing having closed down all these schools that the fourth ward had, I mean, they had a lot of schools. That was the hub back way before we were born. That was the hub of black society. It was the hub of everything. And we have, through the years in St. Louis, moved from Mill Creek to the Ville to Kingsway East, and we have put an attack on our community. And if we close Sumner High School, I think that we ought to be out, all of us who oppose this ought to be in front of the school board members' houses, uh, with picket signs. This is a ridiculous thing. It's ridiculous to take seven days. There has to be another, you're talking about hidden agendas, there has to be another agenda. Seven days is not fair for anybody. I want to com, uh, commend Alderman Boyd, who is also facing a closure in her school, but came to, uh, um, the Rules Committee and talked about, uh, that if a school had to be saved, this is what I call selflessness. She said, save Sumner High School. You have to understand that Veshaun High School, which was rebuilt while I was at the board, is a beautiful new school, but it's only three or four blocks from Delmar. If you close Sumner High School, North St. Louis will have one high school. Uh, Alderman from the second, her ward goes up to the Chain of Rocks Bridges. If you're talking about closing that school, the people who live up by the Chain of Rock Bridges are going to go to Veshaun, the 27th Ward, the first ward, that Mark Twain, these people cannot get to Veshaun. We're going to be putting people on buses. And more to the point, we're going to devastate a community. So I implore you to realize how important it is that we send this thing over today. And I would ask the President's, uh, uh, permission if we let Alderman from the fourth speak?
Yes, we have, uh, Alderman from the fourth hand is up, there's like, uh, three speakers that have had theirs up for a while. So I'll.
Okay.
We'll get, we'll get, um, uh, so Alderman from the 27th.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, and, uh, could I ask the sponsor a question, please?
Alderman from the first will yield a question instead of Alderman from 27th.
Yes, Mr. Pr, Mr. President, I will.
She know what I'm getting ready to ask. Could you please? Could you please take Walbridge off of that resolution? I'm struggling.
Oh, yes, that's right. I'm. I, I, I actually did send it in and if they didn't get it taken off, there was a mistake with Walbridge. Thank you for reminding me. I'm so emotional about closing all of Alderman, uh, Evans' school, I really am, you know? Uh, and Sumner especially, but I did send that in. So we do, we do need to take Walbridge off because Alderman from the 27th was good and that she was able to prevent it from being closed.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I am appalled by this decision. And I've already expressed my interest, uh, to the superintendent and the board members, uh, because we are trying to grow North St. Louis. And if you don't have a school like the fourth ward and/or maybe only one school, nobody wants to come and invest in your community, not any type of business. Nobody will want to live in your community. But yet, we have a overwhelming initiative going on in this city for more and more charter schools. We do need some type of charter schools. Based on the criteria of the public schools, we can hire certain people to do certain things. So we can identify a specialty school as a charter school. But we don't need every single solitary school to be chartered. And now they're also planning on pre-K. So if they take pre-K away, which is the largest number of students in the public schools, we will have to close the public education system in the city of St. Louis. That is not right. It is not fair. it is not democratic in any kind of way and most especially because as the Alderwoman from the first ward stated, our charter schools don't stay open, nor do they perform well. We've only got two charter systems that perform well in the city of St. Louis and every other charter school is below the standards of the public schools. The state knows it, but they do nothing about it. And so speaking the truth on this is what we have to do. We have to protect our neighborhoods and if nothing else, if you're going to do something, why don't you take Sumner High School and repurpose it with a middle and a high school in that building? It has the capacity. So you know, think outside the box and I'm not, I'm not feeling this right now. I am angry, I turned in the information on developments, I need to, I need to stop talking, but my developers have called me. They're opening up, I think it's just the blocks right around the school. I'm talking about one block around the school. There's 240 something units and 20 new homes. How can you close a school? And most especially when Dunbar School is only, I think, 15 or 20 students below their expectations in order to keep it open. That is insane, it needs to be rethought and we need to get involved even though we have no absolute power because they're their own jurisdiction, but we have got to speak loud and I tell you, get your residents out. Get them out, let them know, let them be heard, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 11th. Alderwoman from the 11th.
Sorry, my hand was raised from earlier.
Okay, Alderwoman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like Alderman Davis, I was appalled to even hear that the last public schools that I have in my ward, they were taking them all. I went to my principals and two of my schools and found out that there was some discrepancy in the information that they even used to consider them closing. One of my buildings, they said, was 114 years old. That's hickey, it's only 56 years old. Did they still continue to use that data to use to close down my school? I also looked at the total points that they awarded each school. Some of the schools that they want to keep open have less points than my schools, but yet still you want to close my schools in the fourth ward. Here again, dismantling of the fourth ward. When is it going to stop? When? They propose one of my schools filtering into a school over in the, in Mohammed's Ward, I'll just put it that way, Ashland School. They didn't have as many points as I had. So why is his school remaining open and mine are chosen to close? I don't get it, send his people to my school. If the numbers are what you're going by, and that was an error. They said that we had more students in a particular year, which when they use the calculation, it shows, it showed that we had less students enrollment. That was wrong. According to Desi, we had 185 students in the year 2015, 2016. In this year, we had a plus, an increase of students compared to that in what they were using. So you can manipulate the data to say whatever it is that you want or suit whatever it is that you're trying to do. But my thing is, you're doing this will cause a terrible demise in my ward. I've got millions of dollars of development that's coming and they want to close my schools. I'm sorry, I get emotional, but this is ludicrous and it shouldn't happen. And I ask that you support this resolution because my thing is, why are you harrying? You know, one to seven, what, what's the rush? Whose agenda are you attending to? It's definitely not the community's. And I ask you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the third. There you go.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. So I'm not, I'm not sure if everybody has taken the time to really look at different things that are going on in and around this particular situation, but last year there was an initiative, I'm sorry, turn this to. Sorry about that. I'm not sure if everyone has had a chance to look at the, it's called the School Turnaround Act. There has been something that was similar to that some while ago, but it was, it is not in the same fashion that this particular bill that was presented, or not presented, but it became law in 2019, August of 2019. The particulars that make this different, it's called the School Turnaround Act, is it creates a situation where a school turnaround specialist gets funded by the State Department to go out into each of these schools that are deemed in need of intervention and that's based on a particular criteria set up after a state assessment, which actually started September the first. So schools can be deemed in need of intervention, like our schools are ones that need all the different things that we're talking about right now in particular for our schools needing better pay, teachers needing better access to technology, students needing better access inside and outside of the classroom for help and all those other things that we talk about that are creating the detriment for these schools to be closed, not enrollment, but everything else because all those things add to the culture of a particular school and gives other children a reason to not want to be in those schools. So with those things being said, this act was created to intervene in those schools that actually need the help. And as of September 1st, 2020, no school could have been deemed in need of intervention. But we have 30 days consecutive, we have 30 days after a statewide assessment is done and our statewide assessments are being done in our schools right now. They'll be finished on the 17th of this year or the 18th, I'm sorry, of this month. And 30 days after that, schools will be able to be deemed in need of intervention by a state statute within this School Turnaround Act. So when that happens in March, there is a School Turnaround Committee that gets enacted by a few principals on whichever schools that are deemed in need of intervention, the school board and that can be a charter school or a St. Louis public school, but any school that's deemed themselves an educational institution. So by November 1st, and these things are in wording and shall, and I can't read the whole document, but I know we'll be here a very long time and I probably should, but I will post it, it's extremely important for us to understand. I don't know, can I share my screen? Is that, is that possible? No? Yes? Maybe so? Okay, so I guess I won't read the whole thing, but come November, November 1st, 2020, they have to report to the department and the department will give out these school specialists, these school turnaround specialists to go to these different schools that need intervention and they will assess what is needed inside the schools, take that back to the department and there's $650,000 average for an implementation program that'll be given to these schools in need of intervention after September 1st, 2021, based on money's being appropriated. Now, the reason that this is being pushed and waited to the end of next year because money isn't appropriated right this second and we can easily say, oh, there is no money in the pot for the school turnaround program. You're absolutely right because it does not actually come into effect realistically as far as the turnaround fund into September 1st, 2021, which will be happening after we close these schools. So if we wait until next year, the year after, we'll see that there is a lot of funding coming down the pipeline and that's on the federal level also. We just went through the CARES Act, of course, there is still money that has not been spent allocated to these schools and at some point in time, that money will come into the Secretary of State's hands, the Secretary's hands, and that secretary has the ability to allot funds to these particular schools. So I think right now at this time, there is no reason to shut down our schools when there is a possibility that in one year from now, actually less than a year from now, that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars available to the exact schools for this particular purpose. If our schools are not there to receive those fundings, then the schools that are charter schools within our wards and other schools within our wards will be the ones that receive those fundings. And it also states in these documents that they don't have to follow the No School Left Behind Act. So those schools that are deemed already in need of intervention or needed to be held by the federal government, those things won't even be applicable to this particular law because it already states that those schools, they don't have to follow that particular rubric. So those schools that are already doing well, those charter schools that are already outperforming, they can apply for those fundings too because we will not exist. We most certainly would score within the top one or 5% if you do an assessment on schools that need intervention. So when we go out here and we talk about what we specifically need to say, we need to say that our schools need intervention and they need to be deemed in need of intervention under the state, under the School Turnaround Act. This act is already law, it's not something that will become law, it is there. So we need to be vigilant on that piece and ask questions to Dr. Adams and all of the other school board members, a few of them, you know, I've spoken to and everybody is not aware of this and those who are are livid about it, completely pissed off because they have not heard anything about it. And there should be a conversation on the forthcoming years, the ones that will be here in some time, where that funding will be and if we will be one of the people or the entities that are available to receive that funding. If we're looking at closing these schools based on an assessment of how badly they are in shape and how bad the morale is and all these different things that are inside of the school, those are things we should be writing down and ensuring that whenever this turnaround fund comes, we utilize that as ammo to be the frontrunners and get in that funding. So it's extremely, once again, important for us to read this information. There also was $100 million given out by the fund, the city fund throughout the United States, February 20th, in February of last year, February of this year, I'm sorry, to help grow charter schools across the United States. The fund is also a company, a foundation, if you will, that is partnered with the Opportunity Trust here in St. Louis that is going around giving out funding and giving away millions of dollars to these different schools. Now, these schools are accepting them inside, they're saying, hey, this is great, we got money, we got this, and it is great. We appreciate those individuals that want to help us and do whatever is necessary to pour into our schools and our children. But there are ulterior motives out there and we need to know what those institutions base their entire business off of. And the city fund, its entire goal is to take funding and take the top 5%, I'm sorry, the lowest 5% of performing schools in any district that they work into and repurpose those schools after closing them down and changing them into charter schools. That is their whole goal. So when we talk about us being in those lower percentiles and that actual bill saying that those in the lower percentile get that $650,000 on average, those in the low 1% get over that amount. So we know our schools could possibly qualify for $700,000 to $800,000 based on whatever protocol or message or not program that they put together and it could possibly be funded by private institutions, federal institutions, state institution, all of these different institutions that are looking at right now going into these underserved areas that they have been neglecting for all of these years. The government is making particular changes based on all of the things that are happening around the United States right now. We have, I think, a great chance of being able to see funding based on this act. And once again, they said that this has happened to some degree before, but this is not in the exact same manner and the sponsor of that bill released an article and saying out of his mouth that this is not something that has happened before. They were elated that they will be able to get this out of the Capitol Building and out of the legislature because it hadn't been done before. And if they feel like it hasn't been done before, we need to wait to see what it's going to look like.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be pretty brief here, I think that the biggest thing that we need to do here, I believe, is take a step back and look at this as a reflection point. I think that this is ultimately about equity in our city. We talk about St. Louis really being, you know, a tale of two cities quite frequently. I know near me, I regularly see parents and children walking to school, walking to Wilkinson Early Childhood Center, walking to Dewey Grade School, walking to Mason Grade School. And I think about how useful it is to, to parents and to children to have the place that they go to get educated nearby to them just in terms of convenience, in terms of getting to know your neighborhood, in terms of getting to know your, your community, your neighbors. All of that is really important and a lot of that is built at neighborhood schools. And it's a shame that ultimately we're discussing neighborhoods like mine having that community, that sense of community and that, those resources and neighborhoods like Alderwoman Evans not having those resources and stripping that community, that sense of community there. Ultimately, I think if we take a step back, one thing that we should be doing and all of this is taking a hard look at TIFs and other incentives. On each of these incentives that we see come through, there's a line item and we can look at a dollar amount that we're essentially taking from our city's children and handing over to developers. And we've been doing that for decades and now we're at a point where the decisions that this body has made for quite some time are coming back and kind of kicking us. And I think that we, we can and we should do better moving forward on this to ensure that we're not borrowing from our children and borrowing from their sense of community and their sense of belonging and their sense of having a neighborhood, a good sense of neighborhood, a good sense of community. And ultimately, it, these school closures will ultimately push further the divide that we already have in between kind of the two cities because, you know, when, when one group of people can walk down the street and drop their children off at a, at a neighborhood school and go to work and another community has to take, you know, planes, trains, and automobiles to get, to get their children to school, of course, that's going to have downstream consequences. And I think that we, we can do better and we should do better. And with that, I am certainly in support of this. I hope that we have an opportunity to, to work with the school board and maybe get ourselves a little bit more time here before we make permanent decisions regarding the closure of any schools because once, once these things go, they don't tend to come back. So with that, I'll close, thank you.
Alderman from the 18th.
First of all, let me say that I taught school in the St. Louis Public School for almost 30 years. I taught at Simmons, Turner Middle, Sumner High School. I was part of the Mega Magnet School and Marshall School have all been closed. But what we need to look, look at is that Senate Bill 781, I also oppose that because it allowed charter school. We need to change that bill and put, make sure that the, that the public schools and the charter schools are held to the same standard and the charter schools. that the public schools and the charter schools are held to the same standard, and the charter schools should be under the public schools. Charter schools have lower test scores, and they are nothing but public school. They are private schools, because you can't vote for the board, but they are publicly funded. And so what they've done, there's taxation without representation. So we talked last week or so about certain communist countries. Well, we can't even vote, they are taking private, they are taking our money, but we can't vote. So we need to worry about our own country. But let me say this. I've had the tide plan for more, almost fifty years, and poverty is the issue. Until we eliminate poverty and deal with drug treatment. Also, I've been asking for more, almost twenty years, to fix up those buildings instead of tearing them down. And the president knows when he became president of the Board of Aldermen, he ran the first time I asked him to endorse the tide plan, and he did. So I'm saying that until we adopt the tide plan, which calls for the vacant lots being cut, buildings that we can say being saved, because we could fix up those buildings around those schools, and then we would have we would have children in those schools, because if the tide plan had have been adopted when I brought it out, we would not write today, be here talking about schools closing, because the school would be vibrant. We wouldn't be talking about charter schools if I had been able to get the following when I was out in the street. And with the teachers' union, we were fighting for more than twenty years against Senate Bill seven eighty-one. We would not have a charter school, but we couldn't, but the city had to stay. I'm not going to call the mayor's name, because he's not here, so I don't want to disrespect anybody. But the mayor ran to Jeff City, had the schools taken over, because we would keep it, we were trying to elect a board that would be representative and democratic. As I said, in some way with this, I've fallen on the sword for democracy. But I want to reiterate, we in St. Louis can't talk about anybody, because right now we have charter school. We in the state of Missouri in education can't talk about anybody, because many years ago, the good citizens throughout Missouri, and I was in the classroom, voted to lower the class and tax themselves to lower everybody's class sizes. This is throughout Missouri. So when people talk bad about these citizens in Missouri, we got good citizens. But guess what the politicians up in Jeff City did? Instead of lowering the class sizes, they took that money that the voters voted for and then bounced and used that and put that in education, but the money they were putting in education, they used it to do something else with, I think, some of Bill Prisons and other things. But the point I'm making is that, again, what we need to do, number one thing is let's eliminate poverty, treat people for drugs, fix up our neighborhoods, and people will come. But until that happens, we're going to keep closing down schools. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the twenty third.
Yes. So first off, I want to thank the Alderwoman from the first for putting this together. We did bring this up in committee, and I can tell you that when you close schools and churches, you kill neighborhoods. What I would suggest behind this resolution, that a group of us should go to Jeff City and speak. I know I've done that before. I think that sending a letter or in the resolution, which I support a hundred percent, is good. But I do think that at least a group of us should go up to Jeff City and ask to speak so that they understand that this destroys neighborhoods. You know, we're going to lose population. We're already losing population in these areas. Take away the schools, and we'll lose even more. Instead of building up a neighborhood, we're going to devastate it. So again, I want to thank the Alderwoman from the first for putting this together. I do think a group of us should go up to Jefferson City, and I absolutely support unanimous consent on this. I think the sooner we get this sent off, the better. But I think our actions need to be even go beyond a resolution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Thank you, Alderwoman Tyus, for bringing this resolution forward. I think it's important for the Board of Aldermen to be discussing this. These are our neighborhoods. These are our schools. These are our kids. And I also want to thank Alderman Mohammed for having an education and youth matters hearing yesterday. It was helpful to hear from both the superintendent and members of the Board of Education and members of the public on this. I think we have for too long, City Hall has been very disconnected from SLPS, from the Board of Education. We we need to strengthen those bonds. We need to be considering our schools when every every tax abatement, every TIF is brought forward. We need to be having considerations about charter school expansion. We need to be lobbying in Jefferson City, and that is where, this is where the majority of this policy takes place, is in Jefferson City. They decide how much money our schools get. They continue to cut funding to our schools. And you want to work on St. Louis's crime problem. We need to we need to inject our schools with money. We need to inject money into the education of our children. I am going to be a present vote on your resolution today. I support looking into this. I support, you know, us having input here. I'm a little bit concerned with some of the language in the resolution about putting charter schools into public school buildings. I think that that has a potential to have some really harmful impact on our neighborhoods. We, you know, as we've talked about, you know, there are twelve thousand students in charter schools in the city of St. Louis right now, and that's a lot of students that would otherwise, could otherwise be in St. Louis Public Schools. We had conversation yesterday in the committee hearing about what, you know, what pieces of our gifted school programs are divided based on race as well. And those points were brought up, that we have gifted schools that were designed to be integrated, that they are designed to benefit the citizens of the city of St. Louis, but they're predominantly white right now. How do we get back to addressing that as well? Some of this, again, it's state policy that gets into the DSEG agreement, that we don't want to resegregate our schools. That's not at all what needs to happen, but we need to have a more broad look at where are students going? Why aren't we having the same resources at all of these schools? Why are we busing kids all over the city of St. Louis? And I also just, a really minute thing, Alderwoman Tyus, if you would be amenable to a change in the resolution, it states that the the plan would be retroactive for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year, and I don't think that's accurate. That's in that first whereas clause there, that this will be from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year, as far as I've heard. So I just, I think this is an important conversation to have, especially Alderwoman Evans for the schools that are in your ward. But I just need to be a present vote on this particular resolution. So thank you for the conversation today.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to address the Alderwoman from the eighth's concern about if it was retroactive. I was told that it was not supposed to be retroactive, but I did go on to the St. Louis Public Schools website, and if you look at page, what is, the page is this, there's a page in here, and it speaks to when it will be enacted, and it says the twenty twenty-one school year. I'll go through here real fast, and I'll be able to tell you the page to look at. So if it's a mistake, I can only go by what's in writing in their plan. And that was concerning to me. I'll find it in just a moment. Okay, if you go to page thirty-six of the recommendation, and that is the list of schools, page thirty-six of what they call the building, a better St. Louis city school system. It says, it lists the schools, Clay, Cleveland, Dunbar, Fanning, Farragut, Ford, Hickey, Monroe, Northwest, Sumner, Carntan, they're going to consolidate, effective with the twenty dash twenty-one school session. So I don't know what they call, but to me, that's retroactive, because this is the twenty dash twenty-one school system. So if there is something different, then they need to change what's in writing, because I have it right here. Page thirty-six, and I got it off of the website yesterday, because Alderwoman Evans had asked me to work with her regarding this most important resolution. She wants help. I want to say, am I recognized to close, or am I just recognized to speak, Mr. President?
You're recognized to close.
Okay. I want to say the Alderwoman from the fourth was emotional. This makes me emotional also about closing schools. I actually have been here since the beginning of the closing of the schools back in, right in two thousand and one. My father-in-law, Sterling, Sterling's father, my husband's father, Samuel Miller, started the magnet school program, in case you all don't know that. He was a principal. He was an athletic coach. He was everything at Sumner. People who all graduated from Sumner's in the seventies know my father-in-law. He also helped almost so many people. Every time I go someplace, he tells me about Sam Miller helping people in the school system, from Idaho folk to just anybody. He helped people. My mother-in-law was a math teacher in the St. Louis Public Schools. They both went to the St. Louis Public Schools. When I met my husband, one of the first things we did is we went down, went to the Annie Malone Parade down by Sumner High School. I was enthralled. I also loved how people who went to Sumner, Bishan, Beaumont Central, Sodan, they loved their schools, and they were very happy to have attended these schools. And many of them had to go to schools when they did not let black children go to any other schools. So this was it, education. For me, education has always been a very important thing. My mom comes from a very poor family, and they were sharecroppers, and she had to drop out of school when she was very young, because her father died when she was young, and she had to help her mom as one of the older children raise the children. And it was ten of them. So when I was in the first grade, my mom always told my sister and I how important education is. She went back and got her GED, and my sister and I, we laughed and said, oh, how could you be at our school? Years later, when I graduated from law school, I gave my mother my law degree and said, you taught me how important education is. That is what everybody wants to tell us about what we should do in our communities. I purposefully live in North St. Louis, can live any place in the city I want to. I live here because educated black people have to come back to your community, and you have to fight for it. When I was cheated of the right to represent my community, I came back, because education is so important in our community. That is not, and I don't say to kick it out, because I'm against that. Get educated and leave. Get educated and come back here and fight for your community. Don't leave your community. You don't have to, you can thrive in your own community, but you cannot thrive in your own community when people are attacking you from every side. When I had the twenty-fourth, and this is something you all need to know, I could have always cut a deal and stayed here. My deal would have been against another black war. I never did it, because we're all in this together. I don't think this city understands that when your right hand has cancer, so does your left hand. The city thinks we could just make these cuts, and just like the people there don't matter. You just continue to do things. You take trucks that are supposed to go to pick up trash all over, and you send all the new trucks to a certain part of town, and the people making the decisions who don't look like me don't even see anything wrong with this. And sometimes the people making decisions look just like me, and they go along with it. I have never gone along with anything like this quietly. Education is what changes the whole outlook. When you get an education, it gives you the opportunity to do a lot of different things. It may not be the job of your choice or the career of your choice, but education gives you choices. So when you look at that you have closed seven or eight schools in one ward, that was because that war was the war to be in. The Ville and Greater Ville. People talk about the Ville, but the Greater Ville was just as wonderful. And so based on decisions, not because black people didn't want to live good, but for people who lived downtown, who kept making decisions about Mill Creek or the Ville or whatever, based on blatant racism, they undermine these communities and don't give them the support. Then we do tax abatement, we do TIF, we do everything, and then we tell people, well, why don't you get why don't you get some development and fix your neighborhood up? So I did that, fifty-two million dollars worth. And they said, oh, let's tear that up. They're doing too well. There is nothing you can do in African-American community sometimes that is all right with the people who a powers to be. They do not want you to succeed. They had a written plan that when it was introduced in the sixties, the plan said, we're going to show you how we can take all your services away from you. And when there was an uprising, they then went on and said, well, okay, we're not going to adopt that. They've just been implementing it for thirty, forty years. So you can see what happens to a community when you implement a plan. They tell us that, oh, you don't call the police. Black people call the police all the time. The police don't respond. They do not respond unless it's a murder. They don't do community policing. They don't give you the services. Right now, the Alderwoman from the fourth ward has one of the most important development bills before us. I think it's going to be passed next week, that is so important for her community. She's got hospital and social services coming. She's got medical centers coming. What do you tell people, though, when you want them to move to a community and you have no access to schools? I want to find all those people back in when I first came to St. Louis in the seventies. I came here in seventy-eight, moved on my birthday, and people were fighting integration. Oh, no. And I always remember the white teachers who went to Sodan, and you can go look it up, Google it in the paper. They were outraged when they went to Sodan, because they didn't just intermingle the students, they also did the teachers. And the teachers went to Sodan, and they said, they don't have charts that have all the chemical elements on it. That always stuck in my mind, because people just were so opposed to the teachers from South St. Louis going over even to Sodan. But then when they got there, they were outraged that the children in black schools didn't even have books and charts and things that were up to date. And that's always been the case for many, many years. If you are going to perpetuate this stereotype that one race is superior to another one, then why do you then have to beat the other race down so that they don't have access to anything? Because you're not superior. We're all equal. We all bleed red. But you do all these things. You've had all these laws from slavery to voting to not being able to go to school, the Plessy v. Ferguson, Separate But Equal, which had to have Brown v. Board of Education, because you never, and this was an all-white Supreme Court said, white people will never be fair. They will never have separate but equal. So we have to do integration. Now, integration doesn't work if you don't hit the minds and the hearts of people. If you just force it, we've seen what happened, white flight. But it's unfortunate that people don't learn to live together and go to school together. I've had the privilege. I am privileged. I never went to a segregated school. I never lived in even an integrated community, I mean, a segregated community until I moved here. That's a privilege as a black person. I had good teachers. My mom was not educated, really educated, but she did get her high school diploma. My stepfather, also high school diploma. But they made my sister and I know that our job was to go to school and get an education. If we needed a piano, I got a piano, so I could have music appreciation. I got a clarinet. I got any books that I need. Many of the children in some of the neighborhoods don't have that privilege. My neighborhood that I live in, there are a lot of black teachers that went to school at Sumner, that went to school at Beaumont and Bishan, and they loved the children when they taught there. And so when you slowly erode a community and you try to blame the community, it's like when we talk about crime. We think we can police crime rather than we cannot use education and development to erode crime. You don't have crime, high crime in a lot of areas where people have fifty cents more, because they get up and go to work, and they may be the object of a crime, but they're not the people committing the crime. There are a lot of things we in the city of St. Louis have gotten wrong. We brag about the Central West End and downtown and all of that. That was done at the expense of North St. Louis. That was done at the expense of the fourth ward. And so now you hold the very people who you have been, and not you personally, but at large, the mayor's office especially, had discriminated against. Now the school board wants to hold them responsible and use this black and white chart to say, well, this is why we have to get rid of these schools, and give seven days. What is so important about seven days? Why would you only give seven days? That, to me, indicates you don't want community input. You already have a plan on board, and that's what you're going to do. The Alderwoman from the eighth says she was going to vote present because of my stance. Um, the Alderwoman from the eighth says she was going to uh, uh, vote present because of my stance on charter schools. Let me tell you, I am opposed to charter schools. But what I, see, I have to be real, you haven't lived the life that I have. What I am telling you is that right now, the reason why we have a, a school in my ward is because I built Lexington School over the head of Jay Nixon, who was then Attorney General, going and fighting any kind of desegregation. He went to Supreme Courts personally. I built it over his head, I made an enemy of him to get Lexington School. I called Condisman Clay, Judge Gunn, anybody I could to get that school built. And we got it built over his head and his objection. And I told Jay Nixon I would never vote for him again because he was opposing uh, integration, but and saying, oh, neighborhood schools, but he didn't want to build a new school where there were Quonset Huts where our children went to school. We got that school. But what we did get is they, back in the two thousand and one, they closed all my schools, the rest of them. They couldn't close Lexington, it was brand new. But in its place, they have charter schools, Hawthorne School right there. They used to be uh, Martin Luther King Triade is now a charter school, which they bought. Now, would I prefer it to be a public school? Yes. But what I don't prefer it to be is a big empty building city in my community. Uh, when you go down by Matthew Dickey, we have a private school that started in Matthew Dickey City Academy. Right across the street though is Skullin School, which was doing seventy, eighty-five, ninety percent, but mysteriously had to be closed down in the first round of closing. And most of those childrens went over to uh, City Academy. So uh, they were denied that Skullins was closed because of that. But everybody in the neighborhood knows there was no reason to close Skullin School. But Skullins is sitting there deteriorating, becoming the objects of crime and the school board is not able to take care of them. Let's go over to a part of my community that I didn't represent until they put the first and the twentieth together. That's Mark Twain School. Mark Twain is a beautiful school and the neighborhood is named around it is Mark Twain. Many people confuse it with being Walnut Park, they are not the same. Not that they're that different, but it's a beautiful community of homeowner, single families, a lot. We were just there this Wednesday planting trees, uh, 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 Mr. Jakowski of Forestry and SSM Healthcare Workers was out there and Alderwoman Evans came and we planted trees. You go up and down those streets, those are single-family homes. The people were appalled about how beautiful Mark Twain is, which has now been closed seven, eight years. And they asked questions, mostly Caucasians, but some African-Americans. And they were like, well, this school is beautiful, why is it closed? It's closed because the school board closed it down and they're not maintaining it. And we're just lucky the community tries to maintain it. So except for a window here or there missing and a new roof that needs to be on a certain parts of the building, it's in beautiful condition. So would I want it to be a public school again? Yes. But secondly, then, if it's not going to be a public school, and if we're going to bring all these charter schools in, and we're going to let them take money from the Saint Louis Public Schools and put them in other locations, then at least we can have a rule that says, hey, you got to go in these schools because at least that would maintain the buildings. That's not my first choice, but I'm, I'm realistic. And many of the teachers union opposed this uh, letting the charter schools. And they, they had it in, when they first closed the schools, they had it in writing that you could not. But is it preferable to you that we just let the community around us uh, deteriorate and these school buildings deteriorate? It is not preferable to me at this time. I didn't even say you have to sell it to them, rent it to them. Let it, let them be in there and put the money back in the Saint Louis Public Schools and let them just use it. And unless, and until we get rid of charter schools, which I wish we did yesterday, we have charter schools, so realistically, something has to be done with those buildings. What are we going to do with Skullin? What are we going to do with Mark Twain? And let's get to my own neighborhood, Couples, because right across the street from Hawthorne is Couples School. Now, my husband also worked at the Saint Louis Public Schools. In fact, he ran the air conditioning uh, when, when they were putting air conditioning in. And Couples School has air conditioning, it's a beautiful school. They're letting it deteriorate. So do I want it to just fall apart? Or do I want it to say, find some kind of reasonable compromise and make the charter schools go and go in there? Because right across the street from Couples is this little thing called the Nursery Foundation. So uh, Northside Community is opening up a second park, so they're still there, they're not going away. So it's what do we do? I listened to the Alderman from the twenty-fifth ward fight for a school from the time I came back in two thousand and thirteen trying to do redevelopment. That's a great thing in your mind, but when, when you try to do it, it's so hard. You got these large parcels. So the reason why that is in my resolution is because I have to deal with it daily. And it is hard to attract people to come into my neighborhood when you got these parcels of schools. When, so when you have three or four schools, which you didn't have because nobody attacked your neighborhood like they did mine. When you have three or four schools for twenty years, you might have Alderwoman, a different perspective about what should happen to these schools. Don't give them to the charter schools, but make them move in them while they're uh, uh, running their course. Because most of them don't last, they don't give a better education, they don't do anything better. But they are part of a system that only makes City of Saint Louis and Kansas City do that. Because when you go to other parts of the state and you try to get the county or the other parts, and I've talked to our legislators, they do not want charter schools. They think it's just something for the people in the City of Saint Louis and Kansas City. So please do not misunderstand me, I am not for charter schools. But I'm equally not for leaving buildings in my community empty. What I am for is public education, that is what I am for. I am for in all parts of the community. I am for also giving a historic nod to someplace like Sumner, which is a beautiful school that um, has, has educated so many important black people. I tell all of you, if you have not ever been to Summer, Sumner School, Alderwoman Evans ought to take tours so you can look at the Hall of Fame of all the important people that have gone to Sumner. Will my father-in-law be one of the people on that, that wall? Um, so even though I have, I'm not from Saint Louis, I've lived here for forty-five years. So I feel like I am part of Saint Louis, I know the love of all parts of the city. I lived in the central quarter, South Saint Louis, and now uh, thirty-four years in uh, North Saint Louis. It is, uh, Alderwoman Evans, the fourth ward is my neighbor. Um, it is important to me that I help her fight this battle. I stood back at first because I didn't want to step on her toes um, um, during this resolution because she invited me to. But it is all our battles, it is every one of our battles about education, about fairness and about our children having um, an education. I have always voted for most, more school taxes for years when they did the bonds. My husband and I went down there, we worked on the school bonds, I got all the little trophies and plaques. I believe in a public education, I am not one of the people who has taken my public education lightly. It is because of it I was able to further my education. And it's because also when you have public education, sometime your parent does not know how to fight for you. In my case, my mom didn't, but all the other moms there and fathers there, they did know how to fight for the school. So I was the benefit of other people's parents that fought for me to get an education. So I am always, always going to fight for children of all races and creeds to be able to have a public education and to also have access to some education facility in their community. What is the, what, what message are you sending when you just closed down all of the schools in one community? It is wrong, it is uh, not right-thinking. And to do it, and I, and I don't know if they really did change it to next year, but if they did, they need to change their plan. And in their plan, as I said, it says the twenty, it says that they are going to do it for the twenty-twenty-one school session. And so that would have to be retroactive. That uh, frightens me, if it's not going to be to the uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, but still going to do it, that's equally frightens me. I, I, I am asking every one of you all to please support this, that we be able to uh, pass this out today, that we need to send this to the Board of Education. I want to thank Alderman from the twenty-first ward who had the hearings. But we need to have further um, dialogue with the board. We need to make sure that they've corrected any errors. We need to have Alderwoman Evans' questions answered about why um, uh, that her uh, schools scored higher but were closed anyway. These are questions that need to be answered. We need to ask people morally, do you think it's all right to only have one high school in all of North Saint Louis? Because if you do, the next election, we want to vote all of you uh, we want to uh, vote all of you out of office, okay? Um, the Alderman is uh, saying right now that uh, Sumner High School is only eight minutes from NGA. So if we're talking about building up another place for people to go to school, then why would we be getting rid of this? This is why black people don't like gentrification, okay? Not that they don't want their neighborhoods to be fixed up, but, but whenever something new is coming and they're looking like that they're going to try to move people out, then they move everything that historically uh, uh, um, to that community, they try to get rid of it. You're not going to get rid of Sumner without a fight, it's going to be a fight. Also, you should not want to get rid of every grade school, you need to look at another way to do this. All those people who love charter schools, we should also make them, and since you want to do charter schools, they ought to be in the neighborhoods who don't have schools, at least have something. That is just ridiculous, again, not a proponent of charter schools, do not believe in them. In my own household, not allowed to even say I would believe in them, in my family. But they're here, so you have to be realistic. And having vacant buildings, especially these beautiful uh, school buildings that we paid our tax dollars for, just fall down around you and it's so hard to be able to get anybody to do anything, makes me have to rethink my position from twenty years ago. So if we have to let those schools um, that are still operating go into those class, into those schools, those charter schools go into the public schools. And then if they go out of business, they've at least put some information, I mean, put some money into it to keep those schools from crumbling. Because those were paid for with tax dollars. And by the way, the charter schools are using tax dollars too. So should we have charter schools is a different conversation, right now we have them. And what we're saying is that, what I'm saying in that resolution is that let's look at using those buildings. But more to the point, let's look at not closing Sumner, not closing those other uh, schools that's in the fourth ward, or not closing eleven schools and only giving us a week's notice. I'm also saying it shouldn't be happening in North Saint Louis, South Saint Louis or the central quarter. One week for conversation is not enough, it is not enough notice. People are just now picking up on it. And um, I, I want to give kudos to the people, because I was here when, when um, Bishan was built. Alderman Irving Clay, who was my roommate and was a graduate of Bishan, so he got ahead of the curve and they rebuilt uh, Bishan. That usually keeps your school from being uh, closed, that's what happened with Lexington Schools. I got ahead of the curve, I built a new Lexington. So we do have one public school that people can walk to school with. So I implore you to support this uh, resolution. And Mr. President, I would uh, renew my motion and ask that we suspend the rule and pass this out and send it over to the board. So they, they can know that we uh, care about our community.
All right, thanks. It's been moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the nineteenth, that we suspend the rule for purposes of passing Resolution Number Eighty-five out today. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Ald- Alderwoman Evans? Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Gracia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin? Alderwoman Grass?
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vucaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard? Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Martin? No. Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green? Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderwoman Davis?
You're still muted. There you go. We still can't hear you. We can't hear you. Yeah. If it's aye, there we go, we heard you. Yeah, aye.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Cone? Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard? Nineteen, aye votes, one no vote and one present.
By vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the first. Alderwoman, now would you like to make the motion to adopt Resolution Eighty-five? Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, if I could, I would like to give that honor to the fourth ward Alderwoman. Because that's her.
Thank you.
Where she is.
I think that's excellent. Alderman from the fourth, would you like to make, make the motion to adopt Resolution Eighty-five?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Eighty-four, Eighty-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fourth, seconded by Alderman from the first. I, I think it's been fully discussed, but any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. If there isn't a request for roll call, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank.
Oppose? Motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading?
We have none.
Ms. Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Wednesday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty, HUDs will have a meeting nine a.m. via webinar. That is the extent of the, of the announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
Uh, yeah, but we're not going to have any meetings because uh, next week for uh, public safety because of the uh, staff being on break. Uh, I also, because I've seen the text from Alderwoman Green who's apparently got that COVID stuff and she said she's in her, in her Facebook thing saying uh, she's having breathing and all this. I would say we should keep her and anyone that's has this COVID stuff in our prayers for a speedy recovery and be glad to get her back at the board. Even though we don't always agree on stuff, I hate to see anybody sick.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I moved that we excuse the Alderman from the fourteenth, fifteenth, twenty-second, not sure about him, and the twenty-sixth for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from tenth, seconded by, I think the-
Twenty-fifth.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, thought that was your voice, but I didn't see you picture. From the twenty-fifth, uh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to ad- Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move we adjourn till January eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Moved by Alderman from the tenth, uh, seconded by Alderman from thirteenth, and there was someone else. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? We stand adjourned. See y'all later, have a good, safe holiday.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Holidays, everyone.